All right, we're gonna get started in one minute, so please take your seats.
I'm gonna knock this over someday. Should I welcome Judge Balkman to City Hall?
Just go.
Okay, well, I guess I already kinda did, didn't I?
That was difficult.
Difficult looking there.
Yes.
Everybody doing?
Good evening, and welcome to the City Council swearing-in ceremony and meeting of July 6, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Studley is absent. Councilmember Schuler, here. Councilmember Petron, here. Councilmember Hall, here. Councilmember Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Foreman, here. Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Peacock is absent, and Mayor Clark?
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with administering the oaths of office to... Councilmember Studley will actually, due to her being ill tonight, be moved to next Tuesday, but Councilmember-elect Kelly Lynn for Ward III, and Councilmember-elect Rashar Tortorello for Ward V, and Councilmember-elect Stephen Holman for Ward VII. I'd like to recognize Judge Balkman to administer the oaths of office. You'll get used to it.
If you need to, you'll please raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Rashar Tortorello, solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma?
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly?
And that I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly?
Any money or other valuable thing?
Any money or other valuable thing?
For the performance or non-performance?
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office?
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law?
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear?
I further swear?
That I will faithfully discharge my duties?
That I will faithfully discharge my duties?
As councilmember?
As councilmember.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Say it's time to get to work.
Which way? This way?
All right, congratulations, and welcome to the dais. I'll now entertain a motion to nominate Councilmember Holman as Mayor Pro Tem. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the nomination of Councilmember Holman as Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to nominate Councilmember Holman as Mayor Pro Tem passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to nominate myself as representative and alternate representative of the Oklahoma Municipal League Board of Directors. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the nomination of myself as representative and Councilmember Hall as alternate representative of the Oklahoma Municipal League Board of Directors. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to nominate myself as representative and Councilmember Holman as alternate representative of the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments Board of Directors.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the nomination of myself as representative and Councilmember Holman as alternate representative of the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments Board of Directors. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our vote... ...motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to nominate Councilmember Foreman to serve on the Board of Trustees for the City of Norman Retirement System. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to approve the nomination of Councilmember Foreman to serve on the Board of Trustees for the City of Norman Retirement System. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion passes unanimously.
Councilmembers, we will now represent or present the resolutions to Councilmember Petron and Councilmember Nash, and reserve our council farewells after that. So, item six, Resolution 2122-10, Extending Appreciation to Allison Petron for Serving as Ward III Councilmember in Norman, Oklahoma. I need a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay. "A resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, extending appreciation to Allison Petron for serving as Ward III Councilmember in Norman, Oklahoma. Whereas the health and well-being of a democratic society depends on the active participation of citizens in the affairs of government; and whereas the level of government which is closest to the people is that of city government; and whereas those individuals who seek to run for public office at the municipal level do so out of deep caring and concern for the future of their community and bring their own unique talents, values, and abilities to the job; and whereas those individuals who are elected take on the responsibility to establish public policy and to meet the challenge of complex issues and problems to the best of their abilities; and whereas these public officials assume a demanding task to establish an understanding of the issues, and they do so in addition to work and family responsibilities and demands; and whereas Allison Petron served on the City Council representing Ward III from July 2, 2019 until July 6, 2021; and whereas during her tenure she focused on equality issues, homelessness, affordable housing, and environmental accountability. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, that the Council of the City of Norman on behalf of the entire citizenry of Norman commends and extends appreciation to Allison Petron for her service to this community as Councilmember for Ward III, and wish her the very best in her future endeavors." Item seven, Resolution 2122-11, Extending Appreciation to Michael Nash for Serving as Ward V Councilmember in Norman, Oklahoma. I need a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Go ahead and cast your votes, council. All votes have been cast, and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. "A resolution of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, extending appreciation to Michael Nash for serving as Ward V Councilmember in Norman, Oklahoma. Whereas the health and well-being of a democratic society depends on the active participation of citizens in the affairs of government; and whereas the level of government which is closest to the people is that of city government; and whereas those individuals who seek to run for public office at the municipal level do so out of deep caring and concern for the future of their community and bring their own unique talents, values, and abilities to the job; and whereas those individuals who are elected take on the responsibility to establish public policy and to meet the challenge of complex issues and problems to the best of their abilities; and whereas these public officials assume a demanding task to establish an understanding of the issues, and they do so in addition to work and family responsibilities and demands; and whereas Michael Nash served on the City Council representing Ward V in an interim capacity from September 8, 2020 until July 6, 2021, to fill the remainder of the term created by a vacancy; and whereas although his time on council was short, his dedication to communication with his constituents and researching and studying the materials presented to council for action or input is very much to be commended. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, that the Council of the City of Norman on behalf of the entire citizenry of Norman commends and extends appreciation to Michael Nash for his service to this community as Councilmember for Ward V, and wish him well in his future endeavors." Do you wanna make comments? Okay. Oh, and that sense of humor will be missed, all right. In case you didn't hear that, just a reminder, spay and neuter your pets, Ward V. All right, now this is an opportunity for council to say their farewells. We'll start with Ward II, Councilmember Schuler.
I love how I get to start. I'm the newest member here, but just wanna say, I can't quite see you. I'm not tall enough. Allison, it's been a pleasure serving alongside you. Thank you for kind of guiding me over the last two months. It's been great having a seatmate to kind of look and be like, what am I doing? Can you help me? So I'm really gonna miss you, and hopefully we can still stay in touch. So thank you so much. To Michael, we haven't had much time either, and you kinda sat all the way across the dais, but it's been a pleasure, you know, in our short time getting to know each other. And so I look forward to continuing to have you come to us and to continue to share your research and your knowledge and your quick wit with us. So, thank you. I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lynn?
I wanna say thank you for your service to Mr. Nash and Ms. Petron. Thank you to everybody that helped get me here, all the support, my family, God, all the financial support, all the volunteers from Unite Norman to the FOP and everywhere, all the politicians that elected officials that endorsed me for this position. I look forward to working with the members up here and doing great things for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Ward IV, Councilmember Hall.
First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Councilmember Lynn, Councilmember Tortorello, Councilmember Holman for being sworn in this evening. Looking forward to working with all of you as colleagues as we go forward to put the best interests of Norman ahead of all of us. And to Councilmember Petron, she joined City Council in July of 2019. I followed closely behind in September of 2019 as the appointed Councilmember for Ward IV following the resignation of Councilmember Hickman. Councilmember Petron has been a valuable colleague and helped me really get started and understand how to jump right in, and I appreciate that so much. I think we've already, you know, said a lot of things to recognize her talents, but for me, she has always brought passion. She has been very analytical in looking at problems holistically and trying to figure out how to solve those problems. She's empathetic, she's been inclusive, she's been courageous, but above all, she's my friend. I'm gonna miss ya. Councilmember Nash, your ability to analyze data and take the deep dive gave us another valuable lens to see through that I will really miss. Your ability to look at a problem and analyze a problem has really challenged me to frame questions and look at things in a different way, and I really appreciate having my time with you. I also really appreciate how in tune you've been with your Ward V constituents, especially concerning traffic and safety issues, stormwater and water quality, and how zoning changes impact the Ward V quality of life. So I have really come to appreciate your responsiveness to your constituents and your willingness to go to bat for them, and mostly I will deeply miss your sharp wit and your drive.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Tortorello?
I'd like to echo the same sentiments for Allison Petron and Michael Nash. Especially Michael Nash, he embraced me, we met, we had a lot of conversations at my house over coffee, and he kinda brought me up to speed on a lot of the issues here that the city is facing, and so I appreciate that mic a lot. I'd like to congratulate Kelly Lynn for a win, our friends with Unite Norman, the Fraternal Order of Police for endorsing me, and Mrs. Hall, you know, we talked, and you did give me that guidance I was looking for at the beginning. And, you know, it was a long conversation, and I do appreciate that kinda helped me navigate the areas of city government and what we'll be doing here in the future. Mayor, you too, you know, for sitting with me and, you know, having those conversations, even the short, I do appreciate that. And everyone out here for showing up tonight, this was a team effort. My volunteers, my friends, the guys that we knocked doors on, the donations. It's been a long ride, and I think it's worth it. And I'm here to represent not just Ward V, but the entire city of Norman and to the best of my ability, and I look forward to talking and meeting everyone here. And again, thank you, Mayor, thank your council, Michael Nash, thank you for your help too as well. Allison, thank you for your service too as well, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Foreman?
Well, I kinda got a head start on my thank yous and I love yous and I miss yous to you guys a couple weeks ago, and there's not really much I can add that my colleagues have already said. Dr. Nash, your wit, your intelligence is greatly appreciated. Allison, your insight and your thoroughness and everything is a great asset to the city and will be missed, so thank you both for your service, and here's to the new year.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. I also want to extend an appreciation to both Allison Petron and Michael Nash for stepping forward and taking on the responsibilities of this job. It is a lot, as we've all know that have done it for a while, our colleagues here will find out. It is a lot of work, and it takes a lot of attention to detail, and there's a lot of different people. There's more than just one side, or two sides often, there can be ten sides. And so I really appreciate all the time and effort that you have both spent giving back to this city that I love so much, so thank you. And I'm looking forward to continuing to talk with you and know you as friends here in Norman. And so also extend congratulations and welcome to our two new colleagues, Kelly Lynn and Rashar Tortorello. I'm looking forward to working with you on the many very important issues that this city has to deal with. Ward V and Ward VII share a boundary in one of the fastest, maybe the fastest-growing part of the city in southeast Norman, around Ann Brandon Boulevard. That's the issue I get the most emails about from Ward VII and Ward V residents, so we'll be probably having some conversations about that going forward. I also wanna appreciate, send an appreciation to the residents of Ward VII for supporting me and sending me back to this seat for a fifth time. It's hard to believe that I first took this oath eight years ago. I was just 28 years old and really didn't know all of, fully, what I was getting into, even though I had been watching council meetings for several years. I was pretty familiar with it, but until I sat in this seat and started doing it, I really learned a lot about what it was gonna take. And so the Ward VII residents and people that have volunteered and voted for me, and even those that haven't voted for me but have come to me with an issue that you needed my help with, I'm glad I can be here to address those and work with you. It's also an honor to continue to serve as the Mayor Pro Tem. I haven't had to fill in too many times for Mayor Clark, but I kinda got to fulfill sort of a dream, a hometown kid dream of getting to serve as mayor in a council meeting without actually having to run and get elected mayor, so... That's pretty nice. I can check that off, so... And then driving up to ACOG every now and then to cover in those meetings. It's a good opportunity. You get to meet a lot of mayors and city council members from other cities, and it's always nice to hear kind of the issues that they're going through and the perspectives they have compared to what we're dealing with here in Norman. So in eight years, I've never missed a council meeting where I had to vote on something. That's something I'm very proud to tell people. Unfortunately, on the 28th of this month, I might have to miss my first ever meeting because I have to go to Las Vegas for work. And so I've asked Brenda if there's a chance that I can zoom in or something. I'll be available too, but I can't get out of this, and I might have to miss my first ever vote, so I'm a little sad about that. And then, as of tonight, I've, will now have served with 32 different council members in the last eight years. I've served with three Ward I council members, seven Ward II council members. Kelly Lynn will be the third Ward III council member I've served with. I've served with three Ward IV council members. Rashar will be the fifth Ward V council member I've served with. Five Ward VI council members, and five Ward VIII council members, and then three mayors. So we've seen a lot of change in turnover on this council in the last decade, and it can be difficult to address long-term solutions or situations and problems when there's a high turnover rate. So I'm hoping that we get an opportunity with this group that we're able to work together efficiently and address a lot of these issues that people have in our city. So thank you all so much for coming out here tonight. I appreciate you and looking forward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I have a statement from Councilmember Peacock from Ward VIII. First, I wish that I could be there tonight to deliver these comments in person, and want to apologize for missing this meeting in the last. I pride myself on always being there to represent Ward VIII and can assure you that these past two weeks have been the exception to the rule. I look forward to returning to the discussion in our next session and just want to offer some brief words tonight about my colleagues. Councilmember Nash, your unique perspective, analytical approach, and extreme detailed responses will be missed. I have found many of your comments to be insightful and thought-provoking and look forward to working with you in the future. You have served Ward V well in your time on council and should be proud of that. Councilmember Petron, thank you for always being willing to work in the spirit of positive collaboration and for representing the underserved and voiceless in our community. Your heart is always in the right place, and I commend you for never shying away from the hard conversations and for your fortitude in the face of adversity. You should also be proud what you gave this office. I have sincerely enjoyed working with the both of you and hope that you find success in your future endeavors. To our incoming councilmembers, I wish you the best of luck in your service and am hopeful that we can continue in that same spirit of positive collaboration. True compromise is a two-way street, and there is real common ground to be found if we are all willing to come to the table and look for it. Thank you to everyone for their willing to contribute to the work of the city. Thank you to everyone for their willingness to serve our community in that capacity. And as for my comments, I want to congratulate our councilmembers again, those that are getting re-sworn in and those that are new to the dais. It's an experience. I'll give you that. I see lots of former councilmembers out here. I'm sure they can attest to it as well. I hope that this is an opportunity for us to move forward together because this is a defining moment in our community. There are unprecedented challenges but also opportunities on the horizon, and I hope as a team we can make the most of that. I want to thank our councilmembers for their service. You guys are amazing. It's been a joy to get to know you, and it's been the epitome of everyone's unique talents coming to the table to build a stronger team. So I deeply appreciate that, and I look forward to remaining friends with you outside of City Hall as well. I want all of you to be successful on this dais because the city and its residents do better when we are. So if there's anything that I can do to help you with that journey, please let me know. And if you resign, I may actually kill you. Joke, 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 joke. We've had to do that several times, but I know we've got a great team, and it's going to be an exciting year. Our retreat is coming up. I look forward to seeing the vision for our community, and I have asked that we do. It hasn't been scheduled yet. We've got a very full July, but a state of the city after the retreat so we can share with all of you what came out of that retreat in terms of goals for the future for the City of Norman. And I want to thank all of you for being here. Far too often, local government gets overlooked. Everyone cares about the big inaugurations, but this matters too. It matters deeply because it matters to all of you, the volunteers, the families, that we're all in this together. So thank you for being here. Thank you for sharing this moment with the Norman City Council. Thank you again for your service, and congratulations. I believe that's it. This meeting is adjourned.